Come to order, please. Commissioner Wance?
Good morning. I would ask that everyone take a moment for silent contemplation or for prayer and reflection, certainly keeping all of our men and women in our armed forces and all of those in public safety in your thoughts and prayers. And certainly, we need to also take a moment to reflect on the activities that occurred in our nation's capital yesterday. It's troubling to all of us that serve when the anger reaches the level that it has reached. So I would ask that everyone take a moment to reflect. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to open up this morning, actually with a proclamation. And Commissioner Howard, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, good morning. This morning, we are very pleased to have with us a very special guest, Colonel Thomas Rickard. He's the garrison commander for Fort Meade, who's an important partner, as you know, in the region and a place where so many of our citizens work and also recognizing the tremendously important work that's done on the installation. He has a critical role in making sure that all of that works well and works well with the community, and we've been very pleased to have him. So today, we want to recognize first with a proclamation, recognizing the 100th anniversary of Fort George G. Meade. So I'm going to read that, and then we have a brief presentation, and then we're going to ask the Colonel to just say a few words about our neighbors to the south. So the proclamation says, "Whereas 100 years ago, Fort George G. Meade was established on June 23, 1917, and named for Major General George Gordon Meade, whose 1863 victory at the Battle of Gettysburg was the turning point of the Civil War. And whereas in the years and decades to follow, Fort Meade served many roles and was home to many distinguished men, including then-Major Dwight D. Eisenhower and Colonel George S. Patton. And whereas during World War I and World War II, nearly 4 million soldiers passed through Fort Meade on the way to conflicts overseas. Whereas from the Cold War to the present, Fort Meade became the centerpiece of U.S. intelligence. The base houses some of the most important government and military agencies in the country, including the National Security Agency, United States Cyber Command, and the Defense Information Systems Agency. And whereas Fort Meade is Maryland's largest employer, employing more than 50,000 civilian contract and military personnel, and is the third-largest workforce of any Army installation in the country. And whereas today, we celebrate the centennial anniversary of Fort George G. Meade, we applaud its mission to promote the values of family, welfare, morale, and recreation. We use this occasion to pay thanks to the men and women in uniform, who through courage, devotion, and sacrifice award us our freedom and our liberty. Now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby congratulate Fort George G. Meade for 100 years of excellence and proclaim Thursday, June 15, 2017, as Fort George G. Meade Day in Carroll County and commend this observance to all citizens." And we're going to come down and present this to you and provide you with it, take a picture, but we also want to present something else to you as well. We had our Celebrating America Weekend back in May, celebrating America as a county initiative, as many of you know, where we take time out to do some things to recognize the story of America, the values of America, and bring some of those things to life beyond what our students are able to experience in the classroom and what maybe our citizens are able to experience in the normal course of day-to-day activities. Each year, we have a signature weekend. We had our second weekend this year, and at that, we also had the 704th Military Intelligence
Weaver, Commissioner Wance.
Brigade Color Guard from Fort Meade that was generous enough to come up, spend the
Sorry, sir.
morning with us, and serve as our color guard for that event.
Commissioner Rothschild, and everyone in the room today here from Carroll County.
It brought the level of seriousness and commitment and grandeur to the event, so we
I want to say thank you very, very much for the proclamation, for the support. It's been an overwhelming positive visit for me.
really appreciate that. But I also think it was another opportunity to highlight the important relationship between
I think this is our first official visit to Carroll County, at least in recent memory,
Carroll County and Fort Meade, and so we appreciate that.
and I'm very grateful for everything that the Commissioners are doing, everyone, all
So we have a picture of your folks there for you to take back as well.
the citizens of Carroll County are doing, to try and help work together because we're
Gentlemen?
all one community to do this. We are grateful for the support that we get. We have many, many folks who work at Fort Meade, who live up in Carroll County and love living here, and I can see why. And so we're grateful for what everyone has done for us, particularly for all the outreach that this county does for veterans and veteran services and trying to help veterans. And I think that some of those things that you do are absolute tipping points when people are making decisions about where they're going to live and where they want to live and work and play, and Carroll County is certainly at the top of the list for a lot of people that work at Fort Meade. As the city manager and garrison commander at Fort Meade, I'm fortunate to be sort of the city manager for a small town of about 56,000, like you said, and the outlook is positive for Fort Meade. As we move forward, we know that we have growth. We're going to have growth of about 1,800 more people, known growth, stationing over the next four to five years, plus all the family members that come with that. And we also know that we believe the U.S. Cyber Command will become a combatant command soon, and so with that, we're going to have a kind of a long-term relationship with not only the activities of intelligence that the NSA and the intelligence activities have had there for many years, but also with cyber activities in the cyber industry. And so we think that there's a definite growth going on, not only at Fort Meade, but for our partners in Carroll County and other surrounding counties when it comes to cyber growth and the activities. We are the national platform for information, intelligence, and cyber operations, and we'll be that way for some period of time long into the future. So we're very, very grateful again for everything that you've done, for the proclamation, for the recognition, and for the support, and I'm very, very grateful for that. We hear thank you for your support many times, and it's very meaningful to us, but I want to say thank you for your support and for the privilege of serving. I have no entitlements. I have only the expectation that I hope to get to serve as long as the government wants me to, and so I'm grateful every day that I wear a uniform and I get to serve the great citizens of the country. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I know that you have regular business to attend to. If you have any questions, gentlemen, or anyone, I'm happy to take them.
I think we've answered most of those this morning in our conversations, and it's been great just having the chance to have that dialogue, and I think this will be beneficial to Carroll County in the long run, as well as Fort Meade.
We certainly appreciate you taking the time to come up here. You're always welcome, and we will look for more opportunities for us to shine a light on Fort Meade and to engage in activities down there as well, because we believe it's a partnership that will grow in time and benefit both ends of the spectrum, both ends of Route 32, as we long for the days when we can navigate that more quickly and more safely. But in the meantime, we just appreciate your tremendous leadership, your service to the country, all the work that goes on down there, and being able to be a part of it. And thank you very much for coming.
Sir, gentlemen, thank you very much again. From saddles to cyberspace, Fort Meade has been on point for national defense for 100 years, and we're grateful for your leadership as well. Thank you for the opportunity to come today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, before we move on to the next proclamation, I just want to inform the people in the room. There is a sign-in sheet in the back of the room, in the table here for the public hearing, and asks the people to sign in for the record of this hearing. Also, if you'd like to make comments, there's an orange comment card in the back. Please fill those out and give it to our county administrator. Once you call your name, you will step up the microphone in the center aisle, and you have three minutes to make your comments. Please keep them. The comments will come to, if it's a public hearing or the topic for each item. We'll go through the public comments for those. If there are general comment, they will be at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Now, okay, we'd like now move on to proclamation for the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Department of Citizens Services, Mr. Christine Kaye, would you please come down? And this isn't Celine Stickle.
Good morning.
I'll let you make the introductions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So joining me are our two ombudsman's in the county. Becky, excuse me, Becky Zick is our program coordinator, and Tanner Holt is our program specialist, and I'm going to pass it on to these two, and Becky's going to tell you a little bit about the ombudsman program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanner and I are the Long Term Care Ombudsman here in Carroll County, and we work as advocates for the rights and the well-being of residents of nursing homes and assisted-living facilities. The United Nations has designated June 15 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, abbreviated as WEAD. The day aims to focus global attention on the problem of physical, emotional, and financial abuse of elders. It also seeks to understand the challenges and opportunities presented by our aging population and brings together senior citizens and their caregivers, national and local government, academics, and the private sector to exchange ideas about how to best reduce the incidence of violence towards elders, increasing reporting of such abuse, and developing elder-friendly policies. The Carroll County Long Term Care Ombudsman Program, along with the Carroll County Bureau of Aging and Disabilities, have been involved in various events throughout the month of June in observance of WEAD.
Wow, that's great. You have any comments?
We had our WEAD event yesterday over at the senior center, and it went very well. We got a panel discussion, and we brought up some really good points and spread some information to help prevent elder abuse in our community, and I think it went very well.
Yeah, it was a great event.
With that, we have a proclamation we'd like to present you with. Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner Weaver. Just a quick comment before I read the proclamation. As a Commissioner and as a businessman, I am very troubled by what I consider to be abuse of our elderly, and I know in many, the context of your discussion was in terms of things like physical neglect and abuse, but there's another type of abuse of our elderly, which is epidemic in my judgment. It's benign and it's subtle, but it's taking place, and it creates responsibility for the children of the elderly to be involved with their parents and grandparents, and I'm specifically referring to economic abuse. I see far too many senior citizens in their 70s, 80s, or 90s that fall victim to telephone sales schemes, life insurance schemes, home warranty schemes, mortgage product schemes, and they're vulnerable. And I see them, many cases, that are on limited income, like social security or a small pension. They cannot afford these things, and yet they get snookered into buying things that they don't need. It's not that the sales pitches are fraudulent, they're just oversold products that they don't need. And most importantly, a real big one that I'm seeing, I saw recently, is senior citizens in their 70s, 80s, 90s that are on limited income, in many cases, will be eligible for a property tax credit that's income-based. And that puts a responsibility on the children and grandchildren to remind their aging parents to apply for these credits. If a couple's living on a, you know, $1,700 a month social security income, and they got a $5,000 tax bill, that's clearly a formula for disaster, but I've seen these tax credits run as high as about 75%. So they just have to apply for them. So it places a responsibility on the family members of the elderly to be involved and understand what's going on, to the extent the elderly will allow them to, and protect them. In many cases, they're vulnerable, especially if one of the parents has died, they're even more vulnerable. So just keep that in mind. Take care of your parents out there. Okay, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. "Whereas Carroll County is home to more than 57,000 adults age 50 and older, and it is estimated that as many as 1 in 10 older Americans are abused and neglected each year. And whereas elder abuse is an under-reported problem that frequently results in devastating and life-threatening consequences. And whereas Carroll County's older adults should be treated with dignity and respect in recognition of their lifelong commitment, investment, and contributions to the local community. And whereas Carroll County is pleased to focus attention on heightening awareness, understanding and sensitivity about the issue of elder abuse, as Maryland's older adults deserve our highest respect, protection, and caring. And whereas the Carroll County Bureau of Aging and Disabilities is committed to supporting older adults as they take charge of their health, explore new opportunities and activities, and focus on independence. And whereas Carroll County can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by involving older adults in the redefinition of aging within our community, promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, encouraging older adults to speak up for themselves and others, and providing opportunities for older adults to share their experiences. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Carroll County, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2017, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Carroll County, and urge every resident to take time this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as influential and vital parts of our community, adopted this 8th day of June 2017, and signed by all five Commissioners."
Can we come down to our presentation? or items with positive. Carol?
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. First, I was at the barbecue in Beer Stroll on Main Street in Westminster. Very popular, a lot of people there walking up and down, and they had it partitioned off, so if you had beer, anyway, you had to stay within a certain area. Very good event for the city, drew a lot of people down to downtown Westminster. There's also Food Truck Sunday, coincidentally enough, on Sunday, and it was packed. It was packed. I think they had 11 food trucks there. You could buy the food and do this. You know, you got food from the food trucks, sit down under the trees, the wind was blowing, had local bands performing and so forth. Really, really nice day. I can't believe how many people showed up for that, because when I was going, I'm thinking, I don't know how many people are going, we'll go, we'll see what it's like. It was unbelievable. I got there, it started at 10:00, I was here 5:00 after 10:00. I was parking out in the grass all the way over on the side, but at that point, I said, man, this is really taking off. It was a really, really good event. There's also a flag retirement ceremony last night at the Farm Museum, so I attended with the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts retired, took flags that had been given to them that were retiring, and there was a fire going, it was contained. And at one at a time, put the flags in, they slew the flag, as it went away, which I thought was a very, very nice ceremony. It was really, really good for the county. So I can think of offhand about the things written down, but it's enough.
I'm good.
Okay, I was a little late getting to that ceremony. I was at a Board of Ed meeting, but I did make it to the last part of it, you'd already left, but that was very nice.
Made it even more special.
Yeah, volunteers, but I want to make a couple of comments. Graduation time's over, and I think we attended a lot of graduations here in the last, last past week, and they were great. Even went to Gerstel Academy, fantastic, and what they did with Memorial Day flags was just unbelievable, but I appreciate, I know the students appreciate Commissioners attending those graduations and seeing, you know, these young people and where they're going. I also had one opportunity for Kevin Michael Richardson to achieve his Eagle Scout Award this past Saturday, and that was, again, another great event. I'm always thrilled when our young people reach the top of their club organization. Eagle Scout is only about 4% of the Boy Scouts get to that opportunity, and it's always nice to go out and recognize those people when they achieve that honor.
Could I mention one more thing? I forgot, I said I would mention it. At the planning zoning public hearing that we had down at Liberty High School, I've been a Commissioner for almost three years now, and every time we have something and they're talking about food, I said, you know, where's the meat lovers pizza? They had meat lovers pizza at the planning zoning hearing at Liberty High School. I appreciate it, thank you very much. Plus, it was a good hearing, there was a lot of people there, and it was also well-attended. I thought I had to throw that out there, just so I could get it again maybe later in the future.
So we will rename this to Positively Pizza Day.
You found his weak point.
Now, I'll reiterate with the graduations, two of them on Saturday, and, you know, we were all, throughout the week, attending all of them. So if you pay attention to these graduations, it's not just the kids that are walking across the stage, but where they're going. If you pay attention to the statistics on whether they're going to a four-year institution or two-year, or going into the military, or what have you, that's the key. It really is, and I, you know, it's amazing, the young people and the caliber of the young people that we're putting out there. So kudos to everybody.
They've improved over the years, haven't they?
Yeah, they have. So, and I know we've said a lot about this morning's activities, but I will reiterate again, the outreach that we have increased with this Board of Commissioners, I think, is priceless. We've gotten involved in a lot of things throughout our region, which quite frankly didn't happen before, and we're seeing some tremendous benefits as a result of that. So to all those that are involved in all of the outreach that we do, and today was a perfect example, you know, listening to the Colonel and, you know, what a great, what a great gentleman he is, and we actually had the chance to take staff and tour NSA a few months back. Getting involved in all of these regional activities is really important as we partner with everyone moving ahead. So, and I think it's, and I said a little bit during the, when we took off this morning, but it also goes a long way in helping to cure some of the anger that's out there. It's just amazing to me. We talked about this, and it was talked about this morning at an event that Dick, you and I were at, you know, we used to discuss things and have a dialogue, and now everybody's just angry right out of the gate. And I think we saw the problem that occurs when that happens yesterday. Where are we now when we're starting to just shoot one another? It's just ridiculous. So I'm hoping that we can get back to where, at some point, we can actually have a dialogue and discuss things instead of getting angry at each other. So, and that came to light with all the things that we've been going through, you know, I thought about that when I saw these kids walking across the stage, you know? Where are we going to be in the years to come? But anyway, I got from positive to negative there, sorry about that. I'll bring it back to positive. Kudos to everybody involved today. The BWI Partnership, the Fort Meade Alliance, we've got a great partnership now with Shock Trauma, we're working with our Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore, and the list goes on and on. So to all those involved with the outreach, critically important for our county, so thank you all.
Commissioner Rothschild? Okay, let's move ahead then to the briefing, discussion, possible decision, with the request approval for the Senior Medicare Patrol SMP application acceptance award. Christine Kaye, Nicole Rinaldo.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Nicole is our Senior Medicare Patrol Coordinator, as well as our SHIP Coordinator. SHIP stands for?
State Health Insurance Program.
Thank you, State Health Insurance Program. And we're seeking today approval for our Senior Medicare Patrol application. And Commissioner Rothschild, to your point earlier, this program assists with Medicare and Medicaid fraud. So the Senior Medicare Patrol Project provides outreach and education to Medicare and Medicaid beneficiaries to prevent, detect, and report healthcare fraud. The total cost of the award is $3,869, and there is no required county match. Just to give you a little bit of information about the program, this SMP is incorporated into all state health and insurance program activities. In 2017, the program provided 48 presentations to the community about Medicare and Medicaid fraud. We have shredding events that are held each year at all of the senior centers and community centers in an effort to reduce incidents of identity theft. At the Seniors on the Go Expo, volunteers provided information to the public and answered questions about the program. So far, in FY '17, we have assisted 1,448 clients, and total topics covered with clients is 2,351, and we had 15,710 pounds of shredding at our shredding events.
Do you have anything to add? I don't. We just work very hard with educating the community and who we serve with, just taking charge and looking at their medical information, their MSNs that they get from Medicare, take a look at that, make sure there's no fraudulent charges on there. They bring, if they have questions, they bring them to us. Sometimes, we have very minimal that we've experienced in this past year. The, a lot of them are billing issues with the doctor's offices, so we can resolve them before they get further investigated.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion?
I have one question for future discussion, but it's just tangentially related to this, but the HUD fair market value rents, are we using some published figures from the federal government, state government? I've become concerned.
Commissioner, are you ahead, Ma? Excuse me? Are you ahead?
No, no, I'm on the same thing. It's the RAPs.
No, we're not.
Oh, we're not SMP. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
We'll save it for a few minutes.
I zoned out. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2017-18 Senior Medicare Patrol application and accept the award.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye. Now, we move on to the next one. To the one that I think we're on, is a briefing, discussion, possible decision, request for approval to submit application on a rental allowance program, RAP. And we have Angela Augustus joining us here with the Human Services Program. Christine, you're on again.
Thank you. The Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development is offering application again this year to operate the rental allowance program in FY '18. The Bureau of Housing and HSP have jointly operated this program for 23 years. HSP maintains the waiting list and application process and determines eligibility and provides housing counseling to clients. The Bureau of Housing performs the housing inspections, reviews and approves rental agreements, and secures the RAP housing contract, and the Bureau of Housing pays the rent stipend. The grant is a total of $40,000. $38,000 goes to rental stipends, excuse me, and $2,000 for administrative fees. There is no county match. Do you have anything to add?
No, I'm guessing we're about to get a question about the fair market rents, but now, that pretty much covers everything.
market rents, but no, that pretty much covers everything.
So I'll ask my, my question, forgive me for reading ahead, I gotta, how are we determining fair market rents? Where they come, where's that data coming from?
So from my understanding, it does come directly from HUD, and so I don't know off the top of my head their full process of how they, they come up with that.
And the point I'm making is, it's become to my attention, actually, many times, that there's a possibility that HUD's perspective of fair market rents may actually be exceeding fair market rents, therefore making it harder for people of low and modest income to rent whatever rental housing stock is available in the county, because they have to compete with Section 8 voucher holders who actually can pay more. And at some point in the next two or three months, I want to review that and see whether or not our rates are set too high or not, because it makes it very hard for lower-income people to afford housing who are not getting government assistance.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approves submission of the FY '18 rental allowance grant application.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, move on to briefing, discussion, possible decision, renewal of the Annual Service Agreement with Motorola Solutions. Mr. Scott Campbell, Director of Public Safety. And Mr. Brown. Welcome.
Thank you, and good morning, and Commissioners, I'm, again, for all the viewers out there, Scott Campbell, Director of Public Safety, and I have the honor having with us Mr. Jack Brown, who's in charge of the Emergency Communications Center. And we are here, as you just shared, to request, or to brief, discuss, and if you're inclined, to obtain your authorization to sign the annual renewal of the Emergency Communications Network Support Agreement. The current service agreement, which includes automatic software updates, et cetera, expires the end of this month. It is an annual, it's a 12-month annual renewed agreement. So then, in order to seamlessly continue this critically important support, we're asking for your permission to sign the annual renewal, so that come July 1, when it would take effect, there would be no break in the seamless, or seamless support, if you will, of all these different components of the Emergency Communications Network. I am happy to share, that kind of cuts both ways, I, I'm happy to share that the cost is exactly what was proffered to us last year. I know we had some extended discussions about this, we had some assurances. I'll use the term guarantees of the pricing, and I'm happy to say that the price proffer for the renewal is exactly what we were told it would be for this year. We were told it would be increased by 3% at maximum, and I believe it's 3.08, and we are the reason it's the 0.08, because we increased the number of subscribers, that was a self-induced, but we're talking, I think, $900 and some dollars as far as that 0.08%. It's something that we initiated. So the support of the infrastructure, the Emergency Communication Network, is exactly what was proposed, as budgeted, and I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and hopefully obtain your authorization to sign the renewal.
Scott, we have how many users on our system?
Approximately 2,000, Commissioner. And we also have thousands more who have the ability to affiliate should they need to, but as far as this being their primary radio system, approximately 2,000.
Have we been required outside of the contract to pay for any updates or anything like that that was necessary to keep the network running, or have they included everything that we needed to keep our network up for this price?
We did not incur a, a dollar's worth of out-of-pocket expense, Commissioner, and I'm happy to share, we did ask, and the folks at Motorola did indicate, that during the one year of the quote automa, or software automatic updates, we received a system-wide, radio system-wide software upgrade, and two system-wide upgrades to the microwave system. So there were three system-wide upgrades within the 12-month period that came as part of that, that automatic maintenance and upgrade.
Very good, so they're performing as we expected.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
There were no surprises that we failed to anticipate.
None.
Very good.
Mr. President, I'll move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Safety to sign the annual radio system service maintenance and upkeep agreement with Motorola Solutions.
Second. Third. Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
None, Mr.?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Okay, just a reminder before we move to the next section, there's a sign-in sheet in the back of the room, on the table, for this morning's public hearing, and we ask you to sign in for this record of the hearing. Also, if you'd like to make comments, please fill out the orange card and give them to Roberta Wyndham, County Administrator. She calls your name, you step up to the microphone, you have three minutes to make your comments. So, with this being said, we are going to move to the public comment on this section. We have Mr. Phil Hager.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah, and then public comments, right. Phil Hager, Director of Department of Planning, with us.
Good morning.
So far.
Good morning.
Good morning. Very good. The purpose of today's hearing is to accept testimony in support or opposition to a proposed amendment to Chapters 155 and 158 of the Code of Ordinances of Carroll County. This hearing is being conducted in conformance with the standard process for amendments such as this, and in accordance with Chapter 158 of the Carroll County Code, as well as the land use article of the Maryland Annotated Code. As required, notice of this hearing was posted in a newspaper of general circulation, namely the Carroll County Times, on June 1, and again on June 8. Following today's staff summary, the floor will be open to interested parties to provide comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. As with all hearings, this is not a question-and-answer session, but rather an opportunity to advocate for a particular viewpoint. Speakers will be called to the microphone in the order that they have completed the speaker sign-in card. The County Administrator will also be, she will be calling the speakers, and she will also be monitoring speaker times. Once all speakers have been provided an opportunity to testify, the Commissioners will entertain a motion to close the public hearing but keep the record open for a period of not less than 10 days. This is standard protocol for all hearings involving text amendments. Those wishing to offer written comments may do so after today's hearing through the close of business on June 27, 2017. Written comments may be hand-delivered to the Commissioners' offices, Commissioners' office during regular business hours, they may be emailed to countyclerk@ccg.carr.org, or they may be sent via regular mail to the county clerk at 225 North Center Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. Again, regardless of the delivery method, they must be received by 5:00 PM on June 27 in order to be considered. Please note, this closing date provides those wishing to submit written comments an additional two days more than is typically done under these processes, because you say a minimum of 10 days, and it's scheduled for deliberations in two weeks, so this will actually provide 12 days of, of opportunity for written comment. Before I proceed with the summary, is there any questions on procedure and protocol?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. One is, everything you just said about the 27th is contingent on the fact that we decide to leave the record open for 10 days, correct?
That is correct.
I mean, there, there's an opportunity or an option that we have to simply close the record at the end of the hearing today.
You do have that option.
Right. Second thing is, have all of the, or will all of the correspondence that we've received, all the emails, all of whatever correspondence that has been sent up to this point, automatically be rec, entered into the record, or do we, for the hearing, or do we need to take some affirmative action to make sure that everybody that has submitted something, that their information is recorded as part of the hearing?
Anything that is submitted for your consideration must be submitted today at the public hearing, or between now and the close of the public hearing.
So the thing-
Excuse me, now, now and the close of the public comment period, 12 days from now.
So the correspondence that we've received up to this point that people have asked to put into the public hearing is not being put into the public hearing?
The correspondence that has been received up till now has been people writing to inform planning staff and the Commissioners and the Planning Commission of their views on this, but it's not been directly submitted as testimony in response to this particular matter.
We had requests for people to have their records entered as testimony, really.
I think you can ask the staff that you would want to take recognition, that you would want to recognize that information.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that any of the correspondence we've received on this, up to this point, be entered into the record as testimony for the hearing.
I'll second that. I'd like to, as you consider an amendment, Commissioner Hart, I do support this, what you, which you've moved, but there's another issue, too, that comes into this. I think that there's two separate, legally, there are two separate issues that are getting blurred together. One is feedback on clustering, the second is feedback on the Freedom Plan, and in some cases, it's hard to delineate whether it's freedom feedback, plan feedback, or clustering feedback, and I think that any feedback, whether it's labeled freedom versus clustering, that references clustering should be included in part of the record.
Well, I think if they reference clustering or the amendment sections, because everybody's been pretty specific, I think, about that, those should be included.
This is clustering today.
Yeah, so, so if, I would, I would say if the correspondence references clustering or the code sections, then I think that would be appropriate.
All right, so we're, we're in agreement then, so you'll amend your motion to say if it, if it includes clustering, references to clustering, even if it's technically Freedom Plan feedback, we will consider it to be clustering feedback?
Yeah, I mean, I want to make sure all of those things are part of the record.
Yes, we're to cluster them all together.
Very good, Commissioner.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None. Okay.
So thank, thank you for that clarification, that does, that, without that motion, then, then it would not have, it would not have been done this way.
Sure.
Okay.
Now, there will not be deliberation today.
That is correct.
This is just a hearing to listen, and we make a decision whether to move ahead for 10 days of, or keep the record open.
Correct.
That's the only thing we're, the operate doing today.
So typically what occurs now is that staff provides a short summary of the legislation, at the conclusion of which, we open the floor for public comment. This legislation, if adopted, will make a minor modification to Chapter 158, and will add supplemental text to Chapter 155. In so doing, it will create a new clustering provision in addition to, not in place of, the existing clustering provisions currently found within Chapter 155. Why do so many local jurisdictions include clustering provisions in their codes, and why is clustering considered a beneficial planning strategy? Clustering provides maximum flexibility for subdivision layout while preserving the maximum degree of local control. It is a technique that concentrates allowable development into smaller areas within a portion of a larger site. Clustering facilitates greater efficiency through avoidance of resource-sensitive and constrained areas. It facilitates a reduction in the amount of required infrastructure. It facilitates an increase in the amount of undisturbed open space in recreational areas. It facilitates a reduced maintenance cost through reduced infrastructure, and it minimizes the total amount of area that is disturbed, thereby decreasing stormwater runoff. It is an ideal alternative to high density, and as such, it comes just about as close to having your cake and eating it, too. The new clustering provisions will amend the existing Chapter 155. As such, it will have an effect countywide, not just on the Freedom area. Under this proposal, clustering would be permitted in our 20,000 zoning district within the boundaries of a priority funding area. It will allow an increased density incentive, but that incentive may not exceed 3 and 1/2 units per acre. Due consideration must be provided for recreational amenities and open space. Any such parcel must be served by public water and public sewer. Individual lots may not be less than 7,500 square feet in size, and the average of the outcome of this layout is to achieve a 10,000-square-foot average. Clustering does not change the uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning district. Again, the focus is on flexibility and fostering opportunities to achieve the types of housing options and the amenities that have long been articulated as being a priority of the people of the area. It will allow for more single-family homes to be constructed with greater flexibility in terms of subdivision layout without going the multifamily route. Once this proposal is codified, a site plan with a site-specific clustering layout would be submitted to the Planning Commission for review. The Planning Commission would be provided the opportunity to review, question, approve, reject, or recommend modification. No proposal would be able to move forward without Planning Commission concurrence. The actual number of units that could be approved on a given parcel would depend upon the multiplier eventually adopted by the County Commissioners, the size of the parcel, the physical attributes of the parcel, plus whatever limitations may be imposed by the Planning Commission, as well as the impact of the application of development review considerations. The concept of clustering and its associated incentive promotes the land use efficiencies envisioned for the county's designated growth areas as set forth in the County Master Plan, the Draft Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan, and the 2001 Freedom Plan. In addition, this concept is a direct reflection of the Commissioners' policy mandates as manifested by the millions of dollars of infrastructure that have been invested in these areas, and by their designation by the state and the county as priority funding areas. That concludes the staff summary. At this time, it would be appropriate for Mr. President to begin calling the, those who wish to testify. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask, may I ask a question, Mr. President? May I ask Planning a question? You used the term multiplier, that the number of units will be a function of a multiplier determined by the Commissioners. On May 27, you gave us a chart, if you recall.
Yes.
And it showed a comparison. I don't remember you discussing any specific multiplier when you explained that to us, because the current chart shows the density more than doubling with clustering. Was, was there a multiplier in there that, that, did I miss something?
You may recall when you voted to send this matter to a hearing, that, that the, the second-to-last column was the column that was voted by the majority to send to the public hearing. So that is the subject of this, of this hearing today. So, so what you're hearing testimony on would be related to that. When you move to deliberations, you may wish to approve that, you may, may wish to reject that, or you may wish to entertain a modification to that, which is your right, as long as it does not have the effect of substantially changing the, the thrust of the legislation. If it does, then you would have to have, entertain a new hearing. But if that would be the case, and you would approve something else other than what you approved for hearing, then it could change what the ultimate standard might be applied with regards to the clustering.
So going back to the term in quotes, multiplier determined by Commissioners, that's what I'm questioning, was there a multiplier associated with this example that you gave the Commissioners?
Well, it was 3 and 1/2 units per acre.
That was the multiplier.
That's, that's the PFA standard.
And it was 3 and 1/2 units per?
Acre.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
The first person is Wayne Gibbs. If you come to the microphone there, state your name, and, and you have three minutes.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm opposed to this amendment, basically for the reason that it seems as though all this increased development does not take and never, never has taken into concern the feeder roads that go into this particular area, with essentially four new properties, Gibson, Beatty Wolf, and also the current Wilson Farms. These feeder roads never seem to get changed and are never taken into concern by the Commissioners and the Planning Department when all these additional properties come up for development. I've been a resident of this county since 1985, and the road that I live on off of Mineral Hill Road essentially was a dead-end road when, when my family moved in. It wasn't until the development of Oklahoma Estates that that became a feeder road. Now, since that, no changes whatsoever have been made to that road since it became a feeder road. There are no safety requirements on that road. There are no what sidewalks for children, there's no lighting. The beginning rush hour traffic in the morning and in the evening sometimes exceeds 55 and 60 miles an hour. Yet all this development is taken up front, and never have any of these feeder roads been changed. I can't understand, in this area, how you can add, especially with this amendment, which is less than a quarter of an acre each, 3.5 homes, and per gross acre. I'd like to understand what gross acre means in this amendment. And secondly, I would like to know what the meaning of... If you find it. If you find it. In that amendment, it says, "will allow owner to use residential clustering in the residential medium, our 2000 zoning district, in priority funding area." I would like to know the definition of priority funding area, and I believe that state-funded income that's provided downstream to the counties. I would like to know how much, what is that amount of money that is going to flow down somehow to the owner, as I interpret it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Beth Gray.
Would you repeat your name, please?
Good morning. My name is Beth Gray, and I live in the Freedom Area. I have a few comments and some concerns about this revised clustering amendment as outlined for you today. First, as I see it, the clustering amendment appears to be a reaction to an individual property owner's request to build at a higher density than what was planned since 2001. The Freedom Comprehensive Master Plan has shed light on the problems of the process. One problem is that the entirety of the local laws and ordinances governing zoning and land use provided in the state codes, amendments, and the locally passed ordinances needs a thorough and complete review and update. This should happen before massive changes to land use are put in place. Picking out specific codes in isolation from the whole in response to requests before the county planning department and commission is problematic. It radically appears that special privileges are being sought for very particular developers and their legal teams throughout the county. This amendment, which will become de facto law for the entire county, is currently a reaction to a specific set of circumstances, specifically seeking to gain access for one or maybe two properties. When the current county designated growth area is completely built out, a new area will open up for this type of development. With this amended ordinance, the public won't have much opportunity, for say, in high-density placement. All the while, we will be thinking a less dense development is planned. This is specified in Section 155.095(c) 1, 2, and 3. The language here seems overly broad. It seems like and feels like the public is, in essence, being tricked into land uses of one density with capacity for much higher density buried in the code of laws. This is not a clear direction for our county to take. Lastly, what is evidence that a growth in density and less restrictive clustering is needed throughout the county, but especially in looking at these properties? In summation, it may be that this amendment will be good for the county for some as-yet undisclosed locations. However, amending the code of law in this manner at this time for these properties isn't good for anyone. It is reactive and lacks a complete review of all the impacts possible, and we may end up with a negative butterfly effect on roads, schools, surrounding neighborhoods, transportation systems, water, sewer, and public trust. Further, I have my doubts about amending county codes and ordinances with the unusually broad language as described above. It seems to me that this has been a problem for decades when it comes to planning. Planning needs to be proactive and not reactive. The entire county code and ordinances need to be looked at, updated as a whole, to build an appropriate protections for development, existing communities, and appropriate zoning for the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jean Rouge.
Good morning. I'm delighted to be here this morning. I'm glad that school's out, so it gives me time to be here with you all today. I am a resident of the Freedom District. I have been there for 20 years. I bought into an area and made my investment in this area based on zoning that I did some research on prior to coming from Connecticut. I am here to say today that I am wholeheartedly opposed to the changes of the amendment to 155 and 158. This is why. I am opposed to the upzoning of the Gibson property from low to medium density. This will really change the characteristic of the surrounding neighborhoods, which include Sherlock Homes, Morgan Estates, Quincy Station, Kingsman's Courage, and Springmont. This property, I understood when I moved into this area, is at the end of my road. Gentlemen, it is in my backyard. But this is not in-my-backyard issue. I've done my homework. I've made my investment here based on zoning that was clearly defined to me 20 years ago. I am opposed to the continuation of cluster building on Wolf and Beatty properties. Recent development along Bennett and Oak Creek has not provided open space. Yes, there are unbuildable land, and I suppose that's considered open space, but there is no recreational facilities there for the Oak Creek community. And as I watch the Wilson Farm property being built currently, cluster, I also do not see anything put in for a usable recreational space for the residents of the Wilson Farm. I am also opposed to the blatant disregard of our BZA and our elected commissioner in our fifth district on how this will, the disregard and how this will impact existing roads, utilities, and truly, gentlemen, the at-capacity schools. I work at Oklahoma Middle School, Oklahoma Road Middle School. We are almost near capacity. This county, I believe, has always put the cart before the horse, leaving a mess of unbridled building, no Boulevard District, by the way, which was taken off the last master plan, capacity schools, and numerous unoccupied retail footage. The truly sense of this community, gentlemen, are the people who live there, the people who go to the churches, the community schools, and so on. It is time for true leadership and to truly put now the horse before the cart and start with not allowing this medium-density clustering ordinance to move forward. I have submitted this to you, gentlemen, yesterday, so you do have it on record. I thank you very much for your consideration and time. Thank you.
Thank you. But next is Kimberly Madea.
I'm Kimberly Madea. Often, we hear from folks that a low attendance at county meetings is perceived of a lack of interest or a tacit agreement to everything that happens here in the county office building. I can assure you, that isn't always the case. This morning, over one-third of our county got up and drove to a different city, a different county, or even a different state to go to work, so they can't be with us here this morning. I've decided to be their voice. I'm going to read to you some comments that are going to be in a petition that will be sent to, given to you today, and it has garnered over 335 signatures in a little less than a week, and all these different comments are from people in the Freedom Area. Renee K. says, "Please, no clustering. My commute on 32 has already increased to the point that I now leave an hour earlier and get home an hour later every day. I moved away from Liberty Road to come to Carroll County because I enjoy large lots for my home." Craig N. says, "I just moved to the area last year with my family. We chose this location because it was not congested with too much development and too many people. More development will specifically cause my street, Monroe Avenue, to become a thruway between 32 and Oklahoma and Bennett. That street is mostly populated with young families, and increasing the traffic volume will make it less safe for our families." Someone who chose not to display their name. "My husband and I moved here from Baltimore City three years ago. We loved this area because it wasn't overdeveloped and congested. We would have moved out of state, but we found a place in Maryland, Carroll County, that meets our needs. Now we feel like we've made the wrong decision as we watch more and more homes being built closer together. We bought a house that was built in '73 and have been renovated. It was priced $200,000 below any of the new construction I've seen that sits on one acre lot. We do not need to attract people unwilling to live in an already unbuilt, or, excuse me, an already-built home. I am absolutely opposed to this plan and have yet to meet one person living in my zip code who is. We are working professionals who cannot take time to attend meetings, but let it be known, there is a huge population opposed to this plan." Tim P. says, "This is a quality-of-life issue for those of us already residing in Carroll County. As I read the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan, I can't help but notice the rosy picture it paints of higher-density housing allowing more families to move here and support businesses and bring our schools closer to capacity. The reality of it is that businesses in the Freedom District are doing fine. I'm a business owner, and I see firsthand that growth at its current pace is good. I see Walmart building a bigger store with new grand tailors moving into Eldersburg Commons as well as the old Walmart location. I see two new grocery stores wishing to relocate here. The Eldersburg Exchange is growing. All of this, while the property in question are underdeveloped."
Can you wrap it up?
Oh, thank you. I wasn't watching, I was just busy reading.
And next is Katie Garrity.
I'm Katie Garrity. I live in the wonderful Freedom Area. I oppose the amendments. This will affect the entire county. Even if it isn't in your backyard now or other citizens' backyards, it could be tomorrow. Those of you with farms might want to think about that. It should not be our job as citizens to stop such zoning changes. It should be the job of the planning and zoning and the commissioners to only present ideas that are good for our current residents. In no way does this amending Chapters 155 and 158 benefit the existing residents of Carroll County. The petition that Kimberly referenced has 535 supporters as of 9:00 a.m. today. I will be leaving it open until comment time is closed, and then I will officially submit it to you. If you would like a copy now for the look-over, I can give you, there are over 30 pages of comments. The way that these meetings are advertised, times are changing. People don't get Carroll County newspaper anymore. They read it online. They don't see every little announcement. The Carroll County government only has 2,000 people following their Facebook page, so even if it's on your Facebook page, nobody knows about it. Nobody that I presented this petition to had heard about this amendment. So something has to be changed about the way you alert citizens to these changes. My favorite comments from the petition are, "If I wanted to live in Randallstown, I would have paid money and moved there." And my other favorite is, "No, no, no." Thank you.
Okay, next is Clark Schaefer.
Good morning. I'm Clark Schaefer, and I'm here on behalf of the Gibson property, and I'm going to take the unpopular position of supporting the amendment, but I did drop off a meat lover's pizza before I came up here. Just kidding, for the record. You know, Gibson bought this property in 189, or not bought it, acquired it in 1895. Mr. Gibson, Bill Gibson, he watched as all the development came in next to him. He didn't go to the public hearing and say, "Hey, I'm one lot on 52 acres. How about, why are you giving these people density?" But this amendment is not about the Gibson property. This is about general policy for the entire county. And I have seen too many times when broad public policy decisions that affect the long-term interests of the county are made based on neighbors versus developer-type considerations. This is a broader consideration. And I'd like to, I'd like to say that, point out that regardless of this ordinance, all the adequate facility ordinances still stay in place. In other words, any development that goes in still has to go through that adequate facilities' review, just like every other policy. I'd also like to point out that 3.5 units per acre does not shock, should not shock anybody's conscience. It's roughly similar to what's in the general area. I'd also like to point out that the Freedom Area, the reason we're talking about this in the Freedom Area, that's the growth area. That's the priority funding area. That's the growth boundary. That's where public services either exist or are planned to exist. That's where we should want to direct and encourage reasonable growth, because if we don't allow it there, it will squeeze out elsewhere. There is a thing called the market that's pretty smart. It's, and the, giving this tool to a owner-developer to come up with something other than the cookie-cutter developments that everybody complains about. You know, I went to the public hearing, I heard, I heard people say, "The 2001 plan was great. Let's keep it." And then I heard people say, "Boy, this area really is bad, because look at it. It's too much traffic. We don't get anything. You were the stepchild of the county." You know, one or the other of those is true, probably both of them, okay? But the point is, let's, let's give the development community and the owners reasonable return and the ability to flexibly develop their properties to provide open space and deal with environmental factors. I'd also like to point out, they're not exempt from any of the environmental reviews. If they've got environmental constraints on their property, they've got to deal with them. Thank you very much.
And finally, Mary Kowalski.
Thank you. My name's Mary Kowalski. I live in the Westminster area. I was actually, came today to talk about another issue, our schools, but I saw that was, I hope I have a chance to talk at the general public comment time. I just wanted to also have the opportunity to talk at this public hearing as well. I'm strongly opposed to this measure. I've been fighting this out-of-control growth for years. It's why I first got involved in politics, why I first became a citizen activist 11 years ago. And Commissioner Rothschild of, I hope you're against this, and I hope you're strongly, outspokenly against this. You and I spearheaded the fight against the pathways plan, what, not, 2009, you know, I had you as a guest on my television program, and you were adamantly in favor of keeping Carroll County country and listening to the will of the people. Now, we are overwhelmingly here, joined by members of the community who are, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Schaefer, you know, with all due respect, you represent one point of view, but we have several people here. You're outnumbered by the general population who's against this. And why is this public hearing being held during the day? The Freedom Area is well-known for people commuting out of Carroll County. Why is a public hearing being held when you know people can't be here? If this was held in the evening in the Freedom Area, you would have, if people even knew about this, because as many people have signed this petition against this, or only the people who somebody had the opportunity to carry their feet to their door and get a signature. And I know how hard that is. Trust me, done it many, many times. It is very, very hard. That means there are thousands and thousands of people that don't even know this is happening, and if they knew it was happening, they would sign against it. Where is democracy? You know, I just become more and more disgruntled, thank you, flabbergasted. We're on a slippery slope against democracy, and it frightens me. I'm with Trump, the media. The media is corrupt. It's, 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 I don't, I, you know, where, how we can get people like Commissioner Rothschild who say one thing before they're elected, and once they get in, they flip, they flip-flop. Do, I'm running for Board of Education, okay, and, and I fought...
Wait a minute, no political comments?
Yes, yes, sir. Well, but it does fit in that we closed three schools. I fought it. Now you want to increase development? How does that match? How does increasing development match with closing schools? So I apologize, I didn't know your policy, but...
Time's up.
Well, I know, and thank you.
That's all.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, but before, I'd just like to explain a little bit where I'm coming from, because I think this is important, and I also think that it'll add a little context. My motion's going to be to close the record as of today, not leave the record open. And there's a couple of reasons for that. And it may not pass, but I want to explain anyhow. First of all, I think we've got to be very, very careful in all that we do not to set public policy for specific circumstances. It's something I've been very concerned about for a long period of time. It's hard not to, because I think when you get a certain set of circumstances in front of you, you try to, you try to make things work. You know, on the one hand, people are saying, "Well, I'm saying these things, and you're not responding." And so then you have folks with the best of intentions try to respond and mitigate some of those concerns, and they say, "Well, now you're doing things for a particular set of circumstances." of circumstances." So there's some hypocrisy there. But within that hypocrisy, we need to not be setting policy that affects the whole county for a particular set of circumstances that relate to a specific issue or a couple of areas. More importantly, as a representative for that area, I'm particularly concerned that, while I think it may have been well-intentioned that this was a hail mary pass, if you will, to try to mitigate some concerns, but also to continue to leave an undue burden on the Freedom area. If you look at what qualifies folks for these exceptions, they're exceptions that relate to a very small area of the county. And I think that generally, we work very well together, but it has been the long legacy of that area to be burdened by lack of representation. Some may feel that that's still the case today. That's fine, there's an election coming up. But I'm talking about before we had districts and the fact that we had water and sewer down there, that we had several boards of commissioners that loved the special exception that shoved stuff wherever it was and the notion was, if you couldn't get it done in a municipality, you couldn't get it done anywhere else, stick in Eldersburg. No one will even notice. And by the way, they have water. So I think we, as a board, as we go forward, need to talk about extension of water and sewer. We have to look at where we're willing to put the growth so that it's not just unduly burdened, unless you're willing to give me 10% off the top for infrastructure for the economic growth that we have down there, in which case maybe we could deal with some of these things. There's no question, our road system is a challenge. You've heard what I've had to say on that. The biggest challenge in that comes from the failure of the state to deal with 26 and 32 over a long, long period of time. That spills over to other roads. People also need to understand, though, that this is a long-term plan. Everybody's talking about this thing like it goes into effect tomorrow. And the fact is, we're talking about trying to anticipate what's going to happen 20 years down the road. So the idea of this is, when you start to say, "Well, if this is where things are going to be," now we have a place and a plan to start looking at where do road improvements have to happen. Of course, the very same people that are saying, "Don't put this in because we don't have roads," are also saying, "Don't connect that road because, you know, I don't want that either." I also think there's a fair amount of hypocrisy in someone says... That says, "I've been here 10 years or 20 years or 30 years and I checked the zoning before I built this," that wants to deny that same consideration to someone that had a piece of property before the zoning laws even existed. Why did that person not get consideration for coming here in 1950 when there wasn't zoning in place, but you get consideration for coming here in 1978 or 1984 because you looked at the master plan? All or nothing, folks. Either everybody gets that shot of saying, "You know what? I want to go back to that point in time," or we all have to deal with the reality of what we have in front of us today. So, you know, if we can put the conspiracy theories aside, if we can put the hypocritical arguments aside and try to figure out what's good for the community, we'd all be well-served. That said, I think it's important to realize that I don't think there's support for clustering. I think it's something that if we were to go forward with it, would do nothing other than take a very confusing situation and make it infinitely more confusing. It would be very unpredictable. No one really knows how it would be executed. Like I said, I think it was done with the best of intentions to create flexibility, but it's creating a flexibility in a very small area, very subject to overgrowth, and we don't even know what those impacts would be. So I think... And the other reason why I'm against leaving the record open, although, you know, we can certainly discuss it because I know that has been the practice, is this. We are now also in a period of time where the Planning Commission is accepting public comments on the master plan for Freedom area until May 20th. I think it would be wrong to leave this lingering out there. In fact, I really kind of wish it hadn't come up in the meantime.
June 20th.
I'm sorry, June 20th. To leave this out there lingering so that proper comment can't be made on the reality of the plan because, well, what is the plan if clustering is still out there and we don't know what that means? So my argument would be, we need to cut this conversation today. We need to recognize it's not far enough along. There's not adequate support for it. It would, you know, it would be a matter of setting policy for a very specific situation. And if we clear the way on that issue, then we can accept... The Planning Commission can accept whatever comment they have between now and June 20th so that they can make an adequate decision on what lies ahead for the plan and ultimately get it to us. So I'm going to make the motion that we close the record on the hearing today. That's my motion.
I was surprised... How does... Here's what I thought you were going to say.
Was it better?
Well, no, I'm looking at your press release. And your press release says, number one... I'm going to read it verbatim. You, that I, that's you, "Am opposed to significantly greater density on residential parcels." And it also says in export, "I'm opposed to clustering." So I thought you were going to say, "It doesn't look like there's going to be enough votes, certainly not to pass this clustering version, that we just resolve that this clustering is dead on arrival, at least as it's currently written, it's dead on arrival, and stop wasting time with it."
That's what I said.
Well, you said, "Close the record." But I would go further.
Well, no, I would go further, but I don't think that's the motion I can make at this moment. I'd be happy to follow up with a motion.
Well, I'm not comfortable closing the record before everybody has a chance to... Unless this board is...
I'm totally comfortable amending my motion to close the record with the recognition of not going forward with clustering, if you want to do that.
Yes. At least this clustering proposal.
All right. I'll amend my motion to reflect that I'd like to close the record on the hearing at this time with the recognition or the decision not to go forward with clustering as an option.
And I'll second that, but I want to clarify something, too. Your press release also states that you're opposed to significantly greater densities. May I presume that if you're opposed to the kind of densities from our 20,000 clusterings, that you're also opposed to high-density designations for some of the lands that are implied? May I safely assume that?
I mean, it would be a reasonable assumption for a relatively intelligent guy, but I think that it's a separate issue from this. So I'm going to let the Planning Commission finish their work, but I think the statement speaks for itself in terms of where I think we need to go.
Okay, because we're dealing with...
I understand that some may feel like clustering is better than what the alternative would be if we left the density too high.
That's the point I... Right. The point I'm making here is, now, I'm going to make it clear, and I've made it clear to planning, and they don't like me for it, that I... That while I was strongly open to a very mild clustering proposal, the one that came forward was much too aggressive. And therefore, I said no. Because it was aggressive enough that it had the effect of creating densities that were similar to high density. And given a choice between a crappy clustering proposal and high density, I'd rather have the crappy clustering proposal. But quite frankly, the best thing we can do for this community is this. And I'm going to go after my own Planning and Zoning Commission and my own Planning Department for a second. I'm going to say something they're not going to like. They're going to be angry with me for a long time. But we've turned the letters PFA and DGA into gods. We've turned them into gods. "Oh, it's a designated growth area, therefore it should be high density." No. The purpose of planning is to go out and get the vision of the community. The vision of the community, okay? Now, I'll wage a bet with anyone, if we go back and get the vision of the community, something like 95 to 99% of the comments that reflect the vision of the community is to keep Carroll County, maintain the rural nature of its large flat development and not fill it up with anything from condos to townhouses to even clustered houses on 50 acres. That's not our vision, so I want to make sure.
But I think, first of all, debating the entire Freedom Plan this morning, though I'm up for it, is not something that I think is appropriate. Secondly, I think we also need to recognize, and this is why I don't want the conversation on either end to get too crazy, is that the fact is that our Planning Commission and our planning staff are responding to the reality of decisions made over three decades. Phil Hager didn't decide where the water pipes are. The commissioners did. And frankly, if it were up to me, I'd be running those water pipes further down 26. Now, you'd probably have concerns about that. But the fact is, what we've done is, you know, you talk about decisions we make to put a target on the back of folks. There's a target on the back of the Freedom area because it has the largest unincorporated area and public water and sewer. So the bottom line is, this is why that plan needs to be done separately. But also, we need to recognize that the folks that are trying to navigate this stuff... This is why I can't stand all this vitriol. One more person sends me an email, and it's only diminishing their own arguments. I've had people make some really, really good points and it's lost among these crazy conspiracy theories about things that are not being done in closed doors by people that are behind closed doors, which is really disingenuous. But that having been said, the fact is, we're missing the point. The point is, we have a Planning Commission and a planning staff that has to deal with the reality of today. You know, this isn't SimCity where we get to hit restart and get to start all over again. That would be so cool, wouldn't it? You know, hey, let's build a different road than 26 and 32. Let's build it wider. We know where things are going to be. So they're sitting there saying, "Well, I've got roads where they are. I've got water where it is. I've got a state that puts a few requirements on us in terms of how we define things, right? We can't just say we want to change our designated growth area on our own or our priority funding area. We've got to go back and forth and negotiate."
And Doug, I agree with you.
My point is that we need to deal with the playing field as it stands right now and stop the conspiracy theories. Our staff did a good job with what they had at hand. The Planning Commission has done a good job. I don't understand how people can say they haven't been heard when we know what they're saying.
The point is this, though, Doug. The response I get when I talk to the Planning Commission members and planning on why we need to take this stuff up to some form of high density, regardless of what you call it, is it's a PFA, DGA. Well, if that's the case, then why get visioning and feedback from citizens? If the answer is, "We're going to trump that because it's a PFA, DGA," that's not right. Doesn't make sense.
But it's not a matter of right or wrong.
Gentlemen, one moment here. We have a motion second on the...
Oddly enough, we agree.
Now, we need some discussion on it.
I know. I think we kind of agree, but I just want to make sure of something. I'm sorry, just bear with me a second.
Just keep it not debating each other, but the topic at hand.
The topic here is this.
I mean, I'm sure there'll be a conspiracy theorist out there that writes, "Doug Howard supported ending clustering today because he wants high-density housing," and the good delegates probably homewriting it right now. But the bottom line is, that is not my intent.
Mr. President, may I make a suggestion as to where you may go from here?
Yes, but just one moment. A point of clarification, if we could, first. We closed the public hearing today. That reverts everything back to the original planning Freedom Plan as the Planning Department's putting it together, correct?
No.
This is not the Freedom Plan.
No, this is not.
This is talking about the clustering provision. And that's what bothers me about everyone getting up here saying, "Well, the Freedom and this is the Gibson property, this is the Bailey property." That's not what this is. This is county-wide tax amendment ordinance, whatever. I'm not sure, but... Or both. It's not just the Freedom Plan. And actually, at the public hearing, I was asked... They asked, "Well, where do you live?" I live in Westminster. And guess what? This would apply here. I'm all for it. I invite anyone except Commissioner Rothschild. No, I'm just kidding. I invite anyone to come to my neighborhood and see where I live. I live, if this clustering came about, it would be just like where I live right now, exactly my neighborhood. Come on and see it. See the load, the terrible housing, the kind of people that live there. I know you want me out, but, I mean, just come and see what it's like. It's not the end of the world. This is not question and answer. Thank you. It's not the end of the world. And when... Another comment I'd like to make, when you take a petition around to people that have heard nothing at all about this, the only point of view they get is your point of view. So what's the odds of them signing that petition? About 99%. Because all they have with no prior knowledge is what you are telling them. So when you come up with a petition and say, "Most of these people in this petition never heard of this," well, then they get one side of the argument. What do you think they're going to do? They're going to sign the petition because they don't have any background on it at all. And they have a petition, which was brought up by one of the speakers. If someone made comments but wouldn't sign their name, how do you even include that? If their name's not there, it's not a petition. I don't get that. There's just some of the comments. But go ahead.
Well, I think that you and I were heading in at least parallel tracks, even though... At least in the same direction, even though we're not quite agreeing on the wording. If we're going to close the record, then I think part and parcel that should be, we should also agree to resolve here that the votes will not exist to approve this clustering as it's currently written.
I already amended the motion to reflect it with the decision of not going forward with the clustering.
And send that message to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, it would be the amendment.
And you seconded it, correct?
I haven't seconded it. Have I seconded it?
You did.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. And clearly, that also... And I want to make a statement. You disagree with me if you think I'm wrong. And clearly, that should also be... That also signals, signals at least to the parties involved... I'm sorry, Mr. Hager.
Why are you apologizing to make this?
That it signals, it signals that taking certain properties from low all the ways up to high is probably also going to result in problems with this board of commissioners.
Well, I don't think this vote signals that, but I think I've been clear on my position.
So what you're essentially are seeking to do here is to close the record on this public hearing, cancel deliberations that are scheduled for the 29th, and table further discussion of this legislative proposal.
Of the clustering proposal, correct.
Okay. Any further discussion?
That's the motion.
Is that your... That's the motion?
That should be the motion.
And that's what it is?
That's what it is.
Okay.
Because there's been a lot of discussion, so it's...
Right. So I'm going to vote against this, just to let everybody know. And here comes my political statement, since you all seem to think today's the day to make them. I'm against picking out public hearings and just making them conform to whatever the issue seems to be. We have a process in place, public hearing-wise, that allows for pros and cons. We keep them open for 10 days and that's what we do. So I guess what we're doing now is we're making a decision and we're setting the precedent that even though we have a public hearing, we can amend them at any time. So I'm a little bit troubled, why even have a public hearing if we're going to make these political statements and throw them right out before we even do that? So I'm a little bit troubled by that. While I get the fact that it appears as if in this room today, there are... It's eight to two or eight to one or whatever, there are people out there that have said that this could be something that would be a positive. I've heard them from some of the parts in my district. Now, Tawny Town is no Eldersburg. Get it? I'm not saying whether I'm for or against clustering at this time. What I'm saying is, I'm against amending a policy that we've had in place since I've been here. And that's scooting around a public hearing. I don't like that. And that's why I'd vote against it. Now, I can't see the harm in keeping it open for 10 days.
Okay, well, first of all, I don't think anybody's skirting anything because we had the public hearing. The only issue is, are we going to take written testimony beyond the date of the public hearing? I mean, that's the only issue at hand, which is why I felt like it was incredibly important to make sure we entered into the record, you know, those that have commented already. Although, again, you know, the hearing responsibility or the requirement... And we have had other hearings, I believe, that have not left the record open for 10 days when there have been circumstances, haven't we? That were at issue. The circumstance that is at issue today is, we've got a Freedom Plan public comment period that that hearing's being left open until the 20th. Well, you know, in light of this decision, it may change some other decisions. Now, you know, again, I think Planning Commission is its own entity and they can do what it wants, but, you know, I think there's a point in time when you have to say, "Okay, well, this was kind of thrown out at the last minute." And I agree with you, Commissioner Fraser, in one sense, that this isn't about the Freedom Plan, except it came out of the blue because of the Freedom Plan. See, the problem with saying, "Well, we don't want to make a policy in reaction to something," is when you're making a policy in reaction to reacting to something, which is what we did in the first place. So, you know, I guess at this point, I'm looking for the greater good and making sure that, you know, I don't think there's anybody that wanted to be heard that wasn't or that hasn't been.[1667.25] I mean, I guess there's that possibility.
Well, based on some of the information we've heard today, there are people evidently out there that haven't heard it at all.
Well, but I'm sure that's gonna be true of everything. And I don't know what means people want us to use.
Now, and I don't get that either.
Carrier pigeon or what? Because, I mean, the very same people that say, well, you used to send postcards, all to get their information out by email. So no one sent a postcard. So I, I don't know. I, I, again, I mean, there, there's a certain amount of limitation to the fact that we're, we've looked at every possible thing that we can think of. We're open to other ideas, but, I mean, you know.
Just a point of clarification. Commissioner Rothschild, this was your idea to go to look at clustering to solve some other problems, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Weaver. I was concerned that the signaling we had was that this land was gonna go to high density. And there were other problems associated with that. And I indicated a plan that I would consider a medium density with clustering, providing it was very modest level of clustering, maybe twenty to thirty percent uplift. But when the actual clustering provision came to us, with the numbers provided by planning, the uplift was a hundred percent and the lots were down to a sixth of an acre. And I thought that went about five bridges too far. And I said, no, I'm not gonna support this. And I'm interested in one thing right now, in killing this clustering provision as it's currently written as quickly as possible, as expediently as possible, because I don't like it. Now, I will tell you, there is something that I like even less. That's the idea of certain lands going to high density. And I wanna kill that too. And that's why I'm trying to get clarification of what we're doing here.
You may be surprised to find out, though, that the idea of going to the community also means that you may have some things that don't go the way you like them. I mean, the fact is, for, for someone that has been touting property rights forever and ever and ever, we are willing to take a handful of folks and say, listen, we understand we changed fundamentally your situation when we passed the two thousand one master plan, which now apparently, you know, came down from the heavens. But the fact is, that plan and prior zoning decisions were more than comfortable taking away from folks rights that they had at the time they purchased their property, which is always the thing you go back to. So the fact is, now we've got a new group of folks that say, yeah, but I came in during that wonderful period of time where those people had already been, you know, basically hosed, and at this time, I can secure my situation. And oh, yeah, lock the gate before anybody else gets here, because this was the time to come to Eldersburg. You know, I mean, it was like being on the Mayflower. That was the time you wanted to come, because that was a big deal.
I can't control what happened between now and the beginning of history, but what I, we're not talking about taking anybody's rights. We're only talking about the extent to which we've enriched them right now.
Reinforcing the rights that have already been taken away. But that's neither here nor there. The bottom line is this. You know, you're talking about an entire community. We're talking about a handful of properties. But whether or not that decision gets made in that way or some other, and again, I'm still very much of the opinion that, you know, we, we have a lot of discussion yet to have, and we're gonna get to a place, if people really focus on the problem and not the conspiracies, we're gonna get there. But today, I don't think clustering's what's gonna take us there. And I think leaving it out, if we passed it, it would be confusing. And I think leaving it out there is making it more confusing to get away from the, the issue at hand.
And this is countywide? This does not just pertain to the Freedom District?
But because of the qualifications on it, it only affects certain areas. I mean, not, most areas wouldn't fall characteristic to that. The other thing is Eldersburg, just like Finksburg in, in this regard, are unique in the fact that they're large unincorporated areas that don't have the, I don't know, benefit or curse, depending on how you look at it, of a mayor and town council being able to carve out certain things for their own benefit, to chart their own course. We're kind of at the mercy of what's, you know, decided at the county level. Further hindered by the fact that there's water there. So, you know, it's, it's an easy place to dump things. It really is. But, you know, I think that's probably what we're hearing more than anything, how we get there. But, but, but anybody that thinks that if they've read my statement and they've heard what I've said today, that this is some sort of a, a maneuver to get high density, really just isn't paying attention. So that's, you know, that's all I'll say on that.
So in your, in your press release, you say, I'm opposed to significantly greater density in residential parcels, and you list some. May I assume, may the public assume that you do not support high density?
I don't think I'm on the witness stand.
That's not part of this right now.
That's what it says in the press release. I'm just hoping.
Whoa, 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 gentlemen, gentlemen.
By your own press release is what I want to hear.
Gentlemen, that's not part of today.
I've always stood behind what I put in writing.
We have a, we have a motion and second on the table now that would close the record today and there'd be no further discussion on clustering.
Well, why don't we?
Just, let's get it read back to us, the exact motion.
We better get it. Five, gotta go back five pages or something.
Is the newspaper keeping up?
Most importantly, just mark that I was here.
It was to close, close the hearing, cancel the deliberations scheduled for the twenty-ninth, and table further deliberations on this issue.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, all in favor of, of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries three to two.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Let's go ahead to our next briefing discussion, possible decision, request for approval for grant employee raises.
Commissioner, I believe the judge, the judge is gonna be here at noon.
Okay, let's move ahead and, one item here, and go ahead to, uh, public comment, a, a bid approval, a use of a term contract with slurry pavers. And, huh, Mr. Jeff Castaway, Director of Public Works, and Mr., and Dave Reese.
Well, you thought that clustering was controversial. Wait till we get to these slurry pavings.
Yeah.
That's slurry stuff.
Now, if you guys can get them riled up like this, you're doing well.
No fun intended.
And Mr. Davis.
Well.
I gotta, I gotta point out all the, all the lanyards. Everyone has a favorite team.
I'm in favor of the Gators myself, just so you know.
Outstanding.
Well, I, I, this is a little-known, little-known fact, is that Mr. Davis, he's a fan of the Gators and he's a fan of the Cowboys. And I told him that that probably had nothing to do with his being hired, because we, we, we couple chuckled because only two of the Commissioners like those, those teams. So, if a Cowboys fan and Commissioner Weaver and a, and a Gators fan.
Public Works will not hold that against him.
Great minds think alike.
All right, well, good morning, Commissioners. We're here in front of you today for the use of a term contract for Slurry Pavers Incorporated, piggybacking on a Maryland State Highway contract. It's listed on the, on the briefing sheet, the contract number, for the total of nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and nineteen cents, plus twelve thousand dollars just to cover any contingent items. Contingent items are typically additional sweeping or coming back and cleaning up some areas after the operations have happened. Wanted to be sure we have something that's built into the, to the project. This is within our county, county contract for, this encompassed both slurry sealing and chip sealing as the contractor, as the project that we have this under, but this, we're just talking about the slurry seal today. It's approximately thirty, fourteen roadways with thirty-two miles of, of slurry sealing that'll happen. I do have a list, if you'd like me to list, list the fourteen. We've utilized this contractor in the past over previous years. We have an opportunity to them, for them to come into town here in the very near future, hence the, why we got in front of your, in front of you today for this project.
What's the difference between chip sealing and chipping tar and chip? Well, do you wanna go tar?
Hey, let Ted, we'll come up here and explain that, please.
Uh, the question was the difference between chip seal and the microseal?
Uh, just between tar and chip and these new technology, or new terms, let's put it that way.
Tar and chip and chip seal are basically the same thing. You know, back in the days, you know, fifty years ago, we had tar and chip, and that's what everybody called it. It's now called chip seal. It's basically the same process of the same stone, but now the, the actual asphalt material is a little bit different. They use asphalt emulsions, which are more environmentally friendly, because basically you don't have the solvents that have to dissolve. Basically, it's an emulsion, so they use water as an agent to actually free up the asphalt itself. And then as time goes, as, you know, after the material's put down, it actually cures out and the water actually evaporates. And now your asphalt material acts as asphalt and combines everything together. So that's the, that's the chip seal material. The microseal is a finer material that we use as well. We've used micro-surfacing in the county for twenty-five years plus. We've got very good success in terms of that rehabbing our pavements. And we end up getting somewhere in the range of five to seven years of additional life expectancy out of our pavements using that. The microsurface materials is a finer aggregate. They actually call that a mineral filler. So it's basically goes from a gradation of about a quarter inch in size down to dust. And basically, again, they're adding an emulsion. It's a different emulsion than the tar and chip. And they also add some additional water. And they actually add some cement as well, hydraulic cement, which helps absorb the water and help the curing process.
So this extends the road life five to seven years, and a road that's gonna be cracking, starting to deteriorate?
Yeah, when we, when we, the roads that we use for the microsurface typically have been paved in the last five to seven years. And basically what happens, from an environmental standpoint, when you have the sun beating down on things, it oxidizes whatever's out there, whether it be pavement or whatever, and it starts causing the surface of pavement to start to crack. And once the cracking starts happening, then the next thing that gets introduced is water. And water is not a very friendly element for repaving, because it'll just continue that cracking process and it could practice get worse, to the point where you may end up cracking all the way down through the subway. So the goal is to keep that surface sealed as long as you can. And the microsurface does a very effective job in, in doing that, as does the char, tar and chip.
Is it true if you step on a crack, you break your mother's back? Is that?
That's only on sidewalks.
It seemed like there ought to be some social impact statement that's made. And there we go.
There's a big disclaimer.
Thank you for your clarification.
Does that give you enough information?
Okay, I'll answer that. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. So parameters surrounding what roads are chosen for this. Because I hear all the time, you know, in, in the district that I'm in, that, you know, they just did this road, and now here we are again, and we're doing it again. Is there guidelines, parameters, is there a formula that's used to determine which roads and, you know, except for the fact that somebody's riding around looking at the cracks?
Switch, Commissioner.
It's a, yeah, it's evaluated by the engineer. You worked at engineering department, so you have the first-hand knowledge. It was his job previously, so.
Sure. Uh, to give you some information on that, with our rehabilitation system that we have in progress through the Bureau of Engineering, all of our roads are evaluated every two years. And we actually use a consultant that comes in and physically rides each road, takes a look at the conditions that he's seeing at that time, and they document those conditions. And we have some software called Agile Assets, which we then use to help us develop lists of different treatments based on the conditions of all the roads. So engineering pulls that information together, and they use that to develop the CIP roads list that they work on, which you've just, in the last couple of months, have just approved a couple of projects for them, where they're gonna go out and do, some of the projects might involve full-depth reclamation, it might involve an overlay, it might involve some milling and some repaving. But they develop the lists of each type of rehabilitation to be done. We take the list that's developed for the microsurfacing. And basically what we do is we go out and we also evaluate the road to make sure that we agree with what the consultant sees. And then we basically develop our list, we fine-tune the list that we're given, and we fine-tune our list that we go out and bid with.
And you don't actually, Commissioner, want us ride along on these rides, right?
You're more than welcome sometime, if you'd like to.
Many of the roads that are on the list are actually in, in your district, so.
Yeah, the next one would be, you know.
Get out of the car.
You have Lance's, you know, making sure that his roads are done and nobody else's, so.
No one, no one can prove.
Already gotten one or two of those, Doug, so thanks for bringing that up.
No one, no one can prove that I made that.
Appreciate that.
Actually, what they, that sounds really good, and thanks, Ted, but what they really do is they take all the roads' names and they throw them up the stairs. And the ones that land on certain stairs get hit, right?
There's four roads that's not yours, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, just four, yeah.
One thing I've heard today, everybody's advocating for roads.
Which is, which is why I question, because it seems like it's always, you know, the majority are, are, you know, up in that area. And, you know, I, and you'd be surprised, and I'm sure you guys do too, as you ride around, you get the questions about, you know, good grief, you were just here. Now you're doing this again. So it's, it's good for the public to know that there is not just a willy-nilly way of doing this. There is a formula, there's a process, and, and what have you, to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck.
Yeah, we're, we're trying, we're trying to provide a lot of rehabilitation and more preservation. We're trying to get these roads to last a little bit longer, make the best bang for the buck, so.
Says on here is a high, uh, high efficient friction coefficient that's put in with this. Is that it higher than the coefficient, uh, efficient with the regular asphalt? Do we raise it?
Um, I believe.
Ted again?
Back again? Um, yes, it actually, it does raise the coefficient of friction, because after time, basically, the surface is breaking down.
What is it?
Uh, what the number is?
Yeah.
I do not know. I can find that information out for you.
Just, it's, just curious, being former science teacher and all.
There you go.
That deteriorates, though, over a period of time.
Over time, absolutely, because, again, think about it. I mean, you have the car, the car tires running on it. We're out there pushing snow off of it, so we're, we're smoothing things out. So the goal is, you always wanna have a nice, you know, friction surface to help cars stay on the road. Now, and the other part is, when the roads are wet, that doesn't help either.
Right.
Thought science.
Yeah, we'll get that information.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to?
I don't even remember what we're talking about.
It's only in the Freedom District?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Don't start.
I'll move the Board of Commissioners approves the use of slurry pavers and to install microsurfacing on twelve Carroll County roads in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and nineteen cents, plus twelve thousand dollars to cover contingent items, including but not limited to street sweeping and quantity adjustments.
Second. Checking that. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I understand that the judge just got off the bench and will be coming.
Okay, well, we can go ahead to minutes, I believe, and come back to that. Okay, let's go ahead for minutes for June eighth at ten AM.
Motion to approve.
Oh, that, well, go ahead. Motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Was that for?
June eighth minutes.
Wow.
That's it. That's all we had. That's what they were doing. Dennis did his homework.
We don't wanna be presumptuous here. Are we up?
Come on, come on down. Yeah, that was the.
Are you voting? Are you two gonna vote?
Yeah, aye on that.
All right. All right. Minutes approved. Now, let's go back to our, uh, I think some people had to work this morning. And this is a briefing discussion, possible decision, request approval for grant employee raises. With us, we have Judge Jay Barry Hughes, Susan Leary, Court Administrator, Paul Weller, Family Law Administrator, and Dean of Drug Court Coordinator. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And Commissioners, from our standpoint, I'll be the, the leadoff guy, and then I'll leave it then to the heavy hitters. But the, basically what we're looking for is parity of, of compensation for our grant-funded employees. That's why we're here seeking what amounts to a supplemental appropriation, to be able to bring them in mind with the recent raises afforded to the county employees. So with that, let me ask our Court Administrator to address you.
Good morning. I'm Susan Leary. Ms. Weller, our Family Law Administrator, and Ms. Black, our Drug Court Treatment Coordinator, appeared before you recently to obtain your approval for them to accept grants from the state for FY eighteen. The problem is that neither of the grants provided salary increases for their employees, so that's why we're here today. So Ms. Weller and Ms. Black are here if you have any questions of them, but that's, that's the reason we're here today.
So, let me give you my thoughts, Judge. This is a grant contingent positions. We approve grant contingent positions with the idea that it reduces long-term liabilities for the county. If the state funding goes away, the position goes away. What we're being asked to do here is to treat our grant contingent employees and give them some of the same benefits, i.e. county salary increases that our regular employees get. And we're blurring a boundary. And I'm not comfortable with doing that with county money. However, something I would consider would be, I would consider a one-time bonus equal to three percent for your employees this year. But I don't wanna put the county on a track and start a precedent where all of our grant-funded employees then come in and say, well, you've done it here, so all grant-funded employees now have an ongoing recurring expense to the county, knowing that the state money could go away. So my question for you would be, if this Board of Commissioners, I don't know that they will, decided they wanted to go the direction of a one-time grant, a one-time cash bonus this year of three percent, how would you feel about that?
My thinking on that would be that any additional salary increases for next year would have to be justified through the state grants, so that, um, I think that would be acceptable.
Yes.
From our standpoint. It, it would deal with our short-term issue, knowing that our long-term issue, it's up to us to sell the, the state on the increase in the grants.
In fact, if I may speak, I think it might even make our case stronger for FY nineteen to show that this is a one-time only bonus, and that it's not you paying a salary increase, so that when we apply for FY nineteen, we can make it very clear that we cannot rely on the county doing anything further on that. So I could see maybe that would be a cleaner option.
It would also help to show some support for the effort, though. I mean, in terms of recognizing that, you know, obviously what you do is very important to us.
Yes.
You know, maybe that would help that case as well. And if not, at least then we can, we can have the opportunity to revisit it in a broader sense, you know, in the grand scheme of things, if that.
Has the county ever done anything like this in the past, given additional money for grants?
I have to defer to our Court Administrator for that.
No. Well, according to Ms. Weller, who's been here longer than I, she has, this has, this has never happened before.
Here in Carroll County, although I will say that this is an issue that has developed in, really across the state because of the same sorts of situations developing. And my understanding is, in the last month or so, four other counties have actually addressed this with some sort of supplemental appropriation, in an attempt to maintain parity.
Does this create any concerns about how we handle grant contingent folks?
The grant contingents get.
The grant contingents get a portion of the grants.
They do.
Okay, all right.
This is always the problem with grants, and I hate to see it's a downside of it, but, you know, what you do and what these people do is also recognized by this board as being tremendous in this county, so I could support a bonus-type program and give you some flexibility going into the next negotiation with the state, that, you know, we have support, but we need help, so.
This is not just a problem with grants, it's a problem with the state. They always pass things on to the county, that, you know, you pick up the slack here, you pick up slack here, I mean, it's just...
It's all trickled in.
It's got to end eventually.
Although, painting us as unreliable is a really good strategy, I think. I think that's a, that's an easy case to make.
Yeah, well, I'm going to, I'm going to motion that the Board of Commissioners approve a one-time cash grant, is that the right word? A one-time additional appropriation of $14,418 to pay bonuses to the employees this year. With, I understand there's no guarantee that will continue after this year.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do.
By the way, Mr. Hoyle's record right now is 35 cases in a row that he's...
Oh, there you go.
37 is the record.
By the way, we don't want him shrinking the caseload too much, or he might have to get rid of the judge.
Okay, let's move ahead to agendas.
Monday, or Tuesday, June 20th, Planning and zoning Commissioner, Commissioner Fraser, 9 o'clock, opening remarks at the Alcohol Retailers Seminar, Commissioner Weaver. 2 o'clock, Veterans Advisory Council, Commissioner Weaver.
You go drive from one to the other?
Yeah. I'm only making remarks. Wednesday, June 21st, Carroll County Board of Education Work Session, Commissioner Howard.
Commissioner Weaver, I just want to acknowledge, I am going to be out of town, so I've asked for Vivian to reach out to you all and see if we can't get someone to substitute, so we're represented there.
Okay, do we have a...
Am I allowed to do that? I don't think I'm allowed to do that.
I'll, I'll let you figure it out.
You'll have to go, but no, I don't think I'm allowed to go there.
No, I'm not going to, I'm going to be coming back into town and just barely make the board meeting at the college, so I can't do it.
I guess I have to.
Prior commitments?
I, I'll put, put me down anyway, for now, unless I find, check my agenda. On Thursday, 11 o'clock, Bright Lights of Innovation Entrepreneurship with Controllor Francho, Huffman's Ice Cream in Westminster. I hope to be there. And Bright Lights Award Presentation, Controllor Francho, Westminster Winery, Commissioner Wance. You don't like ice cream? And Sunday, June 25th, WTTR Report, Commissioner Fraser. We move to Monday, June 26th, Bingo Caller, North Carroll Senior Center. Thanks, Commissioner Wance.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Weaver will be doing that.
Good luck with that. You might want to stop and get a flak jacket, some of those...
I know, they're, you got to learn all those cutesy phrases, too, there's certain things you have to say as a bingo caller.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's serious.
I mean, there's a whole lingo to that.
Hey, they, they're very serious about this stuff.
No, I know.
I do know that much, and I'm not much of a bingo person, so I'm in trouble.
You can download something for me.
I'm going to take my place.
Give you a tutorial.
Charles Carroll Elementary School open for visitors at 5:00 p.m. on the 27th, Commissioner Wance. Thursday, June 29th, Carroll County.
Can you put me down for that? I knew we had to be put down for that one, but I might, might be tending that.
Morning, Brick. At 8:00 on the 29th, Carroll County Chamber of Commerce Breakfast with Commissioner Rothschild, Manory Branch, Commissioner Rothschild. And on Thursday, June 29th, full house that day, it looks like. Hampstead Annexation, Melanie Acres coming up, medium-density, nope, that's off. Annual Report, Department of Planning, Adequate Public Facilities Concurrence Management Building Permits, Chapter 156. Farm Alcohol Producers and Associated Events will be on the agenda that morning. And then we closed that day. Not enough items on that. Fuchs Ribbon Cutting at Friday, June 30th at 10:00 a.m. I think all Commissioners will be there at Fuchs and Hampstead. And, and Sunday, July 2nd, Commissioner Rothschild has a WTTR Report.
Awesome.
Anything else for the, oh, we have...
Just 2:00 open session on Thursday, the 29th, at 2:00. Another open session.
You will have items.
Yes.
Now, why is that at 2:00, not at 1:30? Any reason?
You have meetings.
Okay.
You do.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a meeting.
I do?
Yes, you do.
Am I meeting with you? You seem to, okay, I'll take your word for it.
Don't argue with Denise.
I don't.
Actually, it sounded like you were. Actually, it sounded like he was, but just saying.
Do we have any public, public comment?
Yeah, we have somebody for public comment, and I have a couple of things for open ed. If Ms. Kowalski would like to...
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. It's been a busy morning, and I'm happy to be here. My name's Mary Kowalski, and I wanted to talk about a couple of items. One is the Charles Carroll Elementary School. I saw in the newspaper it was scheduled to be demolished, and a new community center is planned to be built on that site. And since, since you're building a new community center, my suggestion is to make it a elementary school. I don't think there are any elementary schools in that vicinity, so the children have to go quite a long distance to get to an elementary school. The children in that community have been split up and divided into various elementary schools, and they've been advocating and hoping and praying and asking for so long that if you're going to demolish that school, to please build a new one. And since a community center is going to be built on that very same site as Charles Carroll Elementary, why not just make it into a, a real community center, the kind the community is used to, a school? I, I feel that that rural community deserves that. And I, I'm against, you know, large factory model schools. I think it's very bad for our children academically, socially, and, and I'm not convinced that, that it's necessarily economically better to have the large factory-style mega schools. And it's not, as I said, morally, spiritually, socially, it's so much better to have a small community school. And I think that's why the families have fought so, so hard for it. So that's my suggestion. You know, it's $2 million to build the community center. Granted, it's more to make it into a school, but, you know, we're saving. My understanding is they're not going to do the, it was, I guess, a $90 million New Career and Tech Center, so, I mean, look at, that's 90 million, tens of millions of dollars we're saving by not doing that. Thank goodness they decided not to do that. Why not take the savings from that and make it a elementary school? Now, my other suggestion, I was at the Board of Ed meeting, which I attended yesterday evening, and I learned there, and I, I had heard this previously as well, that the Board of Ed, that, my understanding, you can correct me, but my understanding is that the Board of Ed would be going into North Carroll High School. And the members of the Board of Ed all spoke about how harmful this is to the, this is not good for our educational system, to be, the Board of, the Board of Education Headquarters needs a central location. I don't know, they said large numbers, I don't remember the number, something like 600 visitors come to the Board of Ed Headquarters every year, and it would be expensive for, even for the employees. And so, again, let's not do that. Let, let's keep, open it back up as a school. That's my suggestion, especially if we're pushing growth. Thank you.
That's it for public comment. That's all public.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple other things. As you know, the, the solar project by the Community College is, is virtually complete. It looks complete, but of course, it's all the little stuff that takes a long time that's not yet done. The developer, the, the company developing it wants to put up a sign at each of the, this project as well as the other ones, and just wanted to pass it by you, they want two of these. There are multiple copies, so you can take one and pass it down.
And Roberto, we refer to all those little things that are needed to make it work. In engineering world, we have a technical term for that, we call them giblets.
Giblets. Yeah, I'm sure there are lots of giblets that need to be done. You know, you've, we've all seen houses go up, and it looks like, wow, it's done, and it's just a shell, and all the electricity and the plumbing and all that, you know, takes, you know, much more time. But anyway, look that over. This is what the, the developer, they'd like to put up two 4x8 signs at this project and on the other two projects as well, when they are completed.
For how, for how long?
Uh...
Just the 20-year lease.
Yeah, the entire time. Don't, no, it doesn't, I didn't, didn't get that information, so I'm not sure.
It'd be nice to let people know what's happening, and I want them there for...
Yeah, I mean, but I'm not sure advertising is...
Yeah. So, and then the only other thing, other than your regular signing the awards and things that you did today, is a letter of support for the permit that we filed for the expansion and upgrade of the Hampstead, as far as we're concerned. And that's it for me.
I had one other thing. I'd raised the question, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, and it sounded like maybe something that didn't want to be taken up, but I wanted to at least ask again. This notion of agencies and such that we fund, that we pay all of their year, on the, at the beginning of the year, seems to be kind of a, an odd way to manage cash. We don't do it consistently for all of them, we do it for some of them. You know, I certainly think that maybe there's an opportunity to at least reach out and find out, you know, if it's, if it has to be that way, or if it's just been that way, but I do think there's a...
That's on the agenda for the 29th.
Well, I know, but by virtue of the fact that it's on the agenda for the 29th, we're talking about something that would have to take effect the next day, essentially, or so, you know, I, I think that, I'm not sure there's much we can do about it, but I just, you know, I hate to see it put off another year, but once the checks go out, the checks go out, so.
But can't we get the details on this for the 29th, or for at least...
Can, the question is, are we going to be comfortable making a decision on the, potentially making a decision on 29th, that someone's not going to get their full amount of money, or at least maybe know the implications of what that would be at that time?
Well, they'll get their full amount of money, just not at the beginning of the year.
At the year, right. Now, there may be some that, I don't know, for whatever reason, might need that, I, I don't know.
Right.
But, but I am much more like the idea of metering that out over some period of time, even if we don't do it all in the first year, getting to the point where we consistently have something in place that, that does that, if we can accomplish it.
I, I would just request, before we make a decision, we make an informed decision, if we meter the money out, that would let us keep larger cash balances in the bank, which means we earn more interest. I want to know what our interest gain would be relative to additional administrative costs. I presume we would come out ahead, and if we do, I would support that.
Yeah, and I think the bigger concern for me is just making sure that, you know, most of our contracts and our other activities define, you know, performance, that you have to do certain things, but, I mean, if we do run into a situation, we have one a couple of years ago, where, you know, all the money was out there, and it was like we were behind the eight ball. And, you know, we don't run into this situation too often, but, you know, there is a measure of responsibility we have to the taxpayers to say, if something isn't doing what it needs to do...
We've been fortunate, certainly in the private sector, you never pay a contractor the whole job in advance. If they don't complete it, you're in big trouble, because they've got your money and the work isn't completed. Luckily, we've dealt with very responsible organizations that have been performing, but I'll say it again, as long as the administrative costs don't exceed the interest we would generate, then I would consider supporting that.
We sent you a spreadsheet about 10 days ago, I'll look you back exactly. There are nine, there are nine agencies that receive payment in one lump sum, Historical Society, Flying Colors of Success, Change, Community College, Homestead Museum, Great Crisis, Social DSS, town, the various town and county agreements, so we lump them together, and Human Services Programs. And the price, and the cost range anywhere from the lowest of $4,500 up to $2.5 million. So, those are the agencies that we pay at the beginning.
You mean the dollar amounts, not, you mean the dollar amounts that we fund them?
Those are the agencies and the dollar amount.
So, so we would need to look at how this would affect our average cash balances in the bank, how much interest we would gain by doing this, and then look at how many hours we would spend.
It's a total of $8.5 million, which is really not much in the full, half-billion-dollar budget.
So it might increase the average balance up to closer to $4 million. So if we get 2% on our money and it's $4 million, right, because if we pay it all at once, it goes from $8 million to zero. If we paid it out $2 million, $2 million, $2 million, $2 million, then the average balance we'd have in the bank for the year would be $4 million, and we get 2% on $4 million, which would be, what, $80,000 or $8,000? 10% would be $400,000. 1% would be $4,000, so it might be as much as $80,000 of interest.
So while that's relatively important, for me, the more important factor is, how does it affect these agencies? And if we're going to make a, a decision on that, we need to hear from them.
Well, can we ask staff to reach out? Well, I, I agree.
Yeah, I'm not in any way going to make a decision unless I hear from them.
Well, that's why I'm asking ahead of time, to make sure we know what we would need, so.
And we need our financial director to...
Yeah, so I mean, if...
Know all the details.
Heads out of town.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's actually even more of a rob question, isn't it? Interest on the amount of money that we hold.
That question.
Yeah, but I think beyond that, if we can have the budgeting, the staff, reach out to the agencies and say, you know, "How would it affect you?" I mean, if it's a huge effect, then, then we got to look at that. If it's no effect, I, I just think good practice to get into would be not to just shell out all the money at once.
Accounting Principles 101. Okay.
That's before I stop paying attention.
Any further discussion coming forward with the board this time?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.